Today's session, thank you all for being here. If we would, if we would all stand, we have someone who would volunteer to open our time together in prayer. Would someone do that please? In our place? Okay? That'd be great, thank you.
Please join me in prayer. Our precious Father, we come to you today, we ask, Lord, for your wisdom and guidance in all that we do. We ask you, Father, for the sermon. We ask you for wisdom, and we ask you, Lord, for grace. Yes, also, Father, that you would protect the men and women who are traveling, our first responders, and our men and women who help with emergency scenes as we are embarking upon what appears to be a cold winter blast. Thank you for what we have, and ask you, Lord, that you would be with the members of this court, give them the wisdom maybe to make the decisions in accordance with your reports of Jesus. May we ask all this?
May we share our pledges?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C. Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Let the record reflect today that all of our commissioners are present. Now typically, we would do citizen's comments at this time. What I would like to do, if it's all right with you, is listen to our presentation, do citizen's comments, and if there's voting that needs to take place at that time, we would move forward on that. If there's not a problem with that, we can do it, we've checked with our attorneys, and so if you would bear with us. And with that in mind, Captain Hollifield, would you come up and share what you have for us today? Hopefully, come to a resolution on what all this is about.
Thank you, Judge, commissioners.
You speak into the microphone, good too.
I'm Paul Johnson, if you can hear me a little bit better. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Sheriff Henderson sends his regards. He is tasked after Tuesday's court to work to accomplish the will of this court. And so I have some points that I'd like to share with you, having met with Sheriff Henderson. He's directed us to do everything we can to accomplish this court's desires and meeting the needs of the owners and operators before us in dealing with incident management rotation system. So what you have before you are just some notes from my presentation in case I deviate. I think the sheriff wants me to try to stay on point to get you in and out of here and these men and women back to work. But after the court, the sheriff has directed us to do everything we can to assist in facilitating that, and that meant redrawing or redesigning a map. So we have got the map done, we took the rough draft that was presented in court, we have now ratified that into our law zones, and those law zones are all together so that when a deputy calls for a wrecker for rotation, it will actually grid to it. So that has been uploaded into our system in a practice database, and that's what we've been working on. It started yesterday afternoon, and we've developed some problems where addresses are not gridding, and we hope to have that resolved by Tuesday. So if all of those things work out, we should have a resolution, we should be able to finish our testing of that sometime next week. And so Sheriff Henderson has asked us to do this as quickly as possible, but in no way should we ever do something that would break our system, that would jeopardize the safety of men and women on the street, or the public, which are dependent upon us to respond to calls. With those things in mind, we would ask this court's consideration, we're roughly two weeks away from March 1st, that you would allow us to march first and make these changes. That gives us time to vet our map, to make sure it's accurate, and to get that done. And I think that would be appropriate. If you would turn on that page two, I'll show you the map, and if there's any audience, I'll bring it up on the screen so that they have an opportunity to see it as well. So the map that the court passed and we have now brought over and put into our law zones are these four zones, which are roughly similar to the county commissioners' precincts. We would have a north tow zone, a south tow zone, a west tow zone, and an east tow zone. These four zones would then, below you see how they line up with our law enforcement patrol zones. As you know, we have 24 patrol zones, so we have to make sure the map works within that. We also have a number of municipalities, and so we have to make sure and test all of those. If this works the way this map has, and there are no additional storage zones created, we would have 15 wreckers on rotation in the east patrol zone, 15 wreckers on rotation in the west patrol zone, 12 wreckers on rotation in the north patrol zone, and 15 wreckers on rotation in the south patrol zone. If we open it up for a 30-day period to allow the tow companies to create a second or a third storage lot in the other zones, that number may increase. But as it sits today, if my understanding of the desires of the court are that a tow company may only tow in one of these four zones that they have an existing storage lot, without the grace period, those are the numbers of tow companies that you will have on rotation. And that is the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or expand on that, and if needed, I'll be happy to give you items that we think are necessary for us to accomplish.
Captain, I was doing some confusion in the last court, especially when it came to the motion that was made on are we changing, or were you directed to change the tow zones or the storage lot zones? And I'm still not exactly sure. When I listened to the court, to go back to what we said, we said we would have, we would stick with 24 tow zones with four storage lots, and that's what, yeah, that's actually what the motion was. I think it was intended to wrap it up.
Right. We will end up with four tow zones, four storage zones, so they will marry each other. So if you want to tow in a particular zone, you'll have to have a lot in that zone. Is what the sheriff's saying.
And it states on this sheet revised tow storage zone map, not just storage like it said on the map last week.
Right.
Just making sure.
Hey, gentlemen, I would just point out to you that the map that you probably had last week, and while I don't have it before me, but what I believe, is it was a map that was created when, in early January, when I started meeting with tow companies across the county and understanding their desires. And their desires are much like the four maps or four zones that you see today, but I took their desires and went back and created a rough map or a draft map, and perhaps that's what's been circulated around. This has taken that rough understanding of what their concerns are and normalized it down to something that could actually function within our twoman CAD system.
On the, did you have a request for when the 30-day timeframe would start? Does the sheriff have a request for that? Monday's good for me, but did you have requests to circle out to here?
No, sir. We will yield to the will of the court. If the will of the court was that they want to start that on the 1st of March, if the will of the court wanted to start it today, we will yield to whatever the court's desires are, if you even want to have a 30-day will.
But did you not say long ago that you would like for it to go for two weeks? Is that what you said?
Thank you, Commissioner. No, sir. What I meant to say, if it didn't come out correctly, is that we need two weeks to enact this, to get this stood up. We can't stand this up today, Commissioner, it's just not, it's not feasible. We've got this winter storm coming, we don't know what it's going to bring, and we can't afford to take down our CAD system to do that, and we're asking for a little lead time till we can get these address points and center lines correctly plotted on the map.
That's what you're trying to, March 1st, that's the deadline you're looking for?
Correct, yes, sir. And we hope to do it sooner, Commissioner. We're just asking for a little bit of lead time so that we don't paint ourselves, as the sheriff said, he does not want me to come in here and overcommit and under-deliver. So he would rather us under-commit and deliver in a much more timely manner than to commit something.
The 30 days would be if you were so inclined to allow tow companies to get a storage lot in another zone, you could give them 30 days, and what he was saying is if you want to start that 30 days from today, if you want to start that 30 days from March 1st, however you want to do it.
The 30 days has to do with...
That has to do with allowing tow truck companies to obtain a storage lot in another zone if they want, if they so chose to do so, and if you were so inclined.
But it doesn't change the two weeks that he's...
It doesn't change the two weeks. No matter what you decide to do, the sheriff is asking for two weeks to update the CAD system.
I can agree with you to the March 1st, and I have no problem waiting for March 1st, give me 30 days to get a lot, that's what I want to do.
Captain Hollifield, in our commissioner's court giving that, I was, one of the things I was concerned about, and I would assume those were as well, is that the sheriff had mentioned that this was going to take a tremendous amount of time, that we were going to have to shut down the other deal, or something to that effect. And which was one of the reasons why I made the motion that I did temporarily, which really ended, resulting of that was in this meeting. So you're believing that we can get this thing pretty much up to speed and running with this particular, with the map that we have here, and with these stipulations that you've made in it by the first March?
Yes, sir. Let me explain that just a little bit, because our sheriff, our sheriff is relying upon the personnel allocated to do updates to map, and nobody dropping everything they're doing. I'm flanked by two captains who truly have been leading this charge. Captain Franklin, to my right, has the one that was originally tasked with creating the ordinance back in 2017 when this court gave it to Sheriff Henderson. Captain Dunn, to my left, has been the one that was tasked with implementing and overseeing the tow unit. So these men have been working behind the scenes. I get to stand up here, perhaps, that I don't mind standing up here, I'm not sure, but that's the reason why we're here. So we're all, everybody's dropped everything they're doing, from our IT director to the support staff, everybody to make this work faster, Operation Warp Speed, if you will. So this is to meet the needs and the desires of the professionals behind us, as well as the desires of this court to meet their needs. But we have to put it at the forefront, public safety and officer safety, and those are the two things that we're doing. And we're still trying to work through some bugs. As you know, we're just about 45 days into this operation, so there are still a lot of keys to work out, and when you start changing things midstream, you could break some more. So our goal is to vet it, double vet it, to make sure that when we do stand it up, we don't have any failures that we experienced, the lessons learned, and that we're able to do this in a much more cohesive and fluid way.
Captain, if we allow the tow truck drivers to get a storage lot in every one of the zones, so right now you said we have in the east zone, there's 15 wreckers, 15 south, 15 west, 12 in the north.
Yes, that's 57.
If every one of those 57 decided they're going to get a storage lot in another zone, would you not end up with 57 on rotation in each zone, and we'd be right back to the problem that we had already?
Perhaps.
We have more people than we do today in any one zone, if I'm correct.
You are correct. However, Commissioner, right now on rotation, we have roughly 684 rotation spots for the 24 zones that we have. In the worst-case scenario that we're looking at, it's going to be roughly, just a little shy, 240 if every tow company gets a storage lot in every zone. So we would take the number of rotation spots from 684 down to 240 if everybody does.
But actually, that doesn't, that doesn't matter how many you have. It matters per zone, because your rotation comes up in that zone. You're not one of 600, you're not waiting, you know, it's not, it's not linear like that, it's by zone. So you're still going to end up with a situation, if we do this, where those zones could have more people in rotation than we have in any one zone today.
Yes, however, we have 24 zones, so we're taking those 24 zones, and if you look at the bottom of your map, we're consolidating, so I think we're consolidating 10 in south division, so down at the bottom it tells you what the law zones are, which our tow zones were the same, so we're taking 10 and consolidating them into one. So what used to be, for example, I think two south used to have 31, 32 wreckers on rotation, if my memory is correct, or something there close. So we're consolidating that down. You wouldn't have that added up relative number for that zone. It would be, all of those records would be sharing all the calls in those 10 zones at one time.
And they feel like this is a better plan?
I would defer that to the tow companies to speak for themselves on whether or not. This is certainly the map that, when I met with them back in early January, that they asked, or something very, very close to it with a few modifications. And do I believe it's going to reduce the total number of rotation spots? Yes. Do I believe that we could very well see an increased number of wreckers on one particular rotation if they all chose to open a storage lot in the next 30 days? Absolutely. Do I believe that they may elect not to because of the burden from opening a storage lot because they have to staff it eight to five, I believe is one of the rules through TDLR? They might elect not to do that. Some of them, I think, are looking to see how water's going to find its level. And I think we're seeing now that it's about to level out. It may have leveled out on its own, but because of the court's desires, we're bringing back to you a modification, and hopefully that will expedite that process.
Captain Hollifield, Commissioner Madison-Riley worked very hard on this. If I could, I think, Commissioner Madison-Riley, would you, can you comment, or do you have any comments that you want to make on this, where we're headed with it specifically? With the possibility, as Commissioner Noack brought up about all these zones, we may end up in the same situation we're in now, or Commissioner Metz?
You brought up on the, Commissioner Noack on the timeframes on there. I'm, I'm good with the two weeks on the March 1st deal that Commissioner Riley brought up there. I think that's, I think that's fair, and I certainly come in and appreciate the sheriff and you guys being here today to do that, even with the different weather coming. I'm, I'm comfortable with the Monday the 15th, start your 30-day timeframe there, so to be able to get a, to be able to get you an additional storage facility, whatever the 30 days after that timeframe would be, that's not going to affect what you're doing here on implementing your policy. You just have, you have 30 days, and if you want to put in another lot in one of those zones, you have 30 days from Monday to that. That would be, that's what I would like to see, but I will, whatever you gentlemen like is fine with me.
As per what Commissioner Noack said, my question has to do with how do we keep from ending up with the same problem we have now over time, as people add to all these additional lot, storage lots to these zones?
Well, you're going more likely to need at least an acre, the things, the things that he brought up, with having to staff someone to staff it there eight to five every day, and then to go out and buy one. I mean, me personally, if I was in the business and I wanted one bad enough, and I thought my business was going to work that out, I would, I'd go to Mike and get the money if I didn't have it myself, and if I could secure that in that time, then there you are. And if you have a few more, then you have, I think this will be sufficient, what we have now. I'm just trying to be fair, as fair as I could be to the operators and to the public, and make sure we had an adequate amount of tow truck to serve the needs. I think what you have here is...
What was that, somebody smoking in the bathroom?
They're working on the sprinklers in the attic.
Oh. Commissioner Riley?
I'm a firm believer that if we cut this down from 680-something rotations to 200-something, that's going to make things better. Again, this is supposed to be a work in progress, so there's got to be a starting place, there's got to be a place where we finally get it all wrapped up, and I don't know if this is it or not, but I do think it's better that we do this. You know, throughout all of our discussions and workshops and all of our meetings that we've had, there's always been a question too about a $25 charge, that we're doing something for somebody that we, that's running a bill, a $25 charge or something. I can't even remember what that was. Is there, is there some way that during all this period when we're trying to do all this rearranging and do all this restructuring, do we, can we do away with that $25 fee that we're charging these guys for a tow or whatever we're doing?
So that money right now is going into the general fund, and you all would have the ability to, we could look at, right now, no bills have gone out, no one has been charged at this point, and we need to work with the sheriff's office to make sure that bills, when they do go out, are accurate, and that we're billing people appropriately. We can, your ability to waive fees is not there at this point, but we can bring an item back to do that once we realize how much it is that we are waiving. We just don't know yet.
So what you're saying here is get it in place, make sure we're looking at it.
Yes. You came for a period of 30 days. If you don't want to bill, that's fine.
Well, I'd like to at least bring it back so we look, no, we're talking about what we're looking at.
And we have to bring this back no matter what we do, because all we need to bring back amended ordinance, and so once you can say that this is what we're going to do with the fees, we're going to be doing this, we can bring it all back to at once, but right now, you wouldn't even know what that, that looks like.
There'll be other things as well, and I'd like to thank the sheriff, and I'd like to thank you gentlemen for your time that you spent on this, and Commissioner Riley, and some of my team. I've talked to you, Captain Franklin, my offer still stands to the sheriff, that we understand what you're going through, I certainly do, and I still offer, we'll get that worked out a little later, but offer the assistance or help with the administrative position that you may need to do this, as well as a clerk, and be helpful, help for the person that'll be going around, is going to be spending a lot of time out here in the future, so that offer still stands. We can deal with that later on. That won't have anything to do with this motion here today. But I do appreciate your efforts and your hard work, and trying to help work this out.
Now, before we irrigate the motion...
Commissioner Riley, just real quick, talk to me, I mean, you said that...
Yes, so if you decided to waive the fees, it's not going to make a big impact on your budget. Rakesh and I were just talking, the revenue that is projected for that is very minimal, and is really not going to be a major impact on your budget. Just so you know, I'm not making, so regarding fund bonds or anything like that, okay?
So once we have, once we have that amount, and you have that information in front of you, then we can make a decision about how to do it, for what time period to do it, and all that comes up. And the sheriff's office, I'm sure, is happy to bring back a recommendation about that as well.
And I talked to the sheriff about that. He would like to see that suspended for two months, and he also, he understands that Commissioner Metz has made a generous offer as far as assistance, but he feels as if, if we, once we start those fees and put them back in place, if we direct those fees to the sheriff's department's budget instead of the general fund, he thinks that would be sufficient to cover the costs that he would incur in implementing this program. I think that's what the sheriff's...
Is that, is that something we have to decide right now?
No, it's not. But I just wanted to comment.
The sheriff wanted me to bring that up.
I wasn't too concerned about our budget. I'm concerned about these guys that have to pay $25 right now while we're trying to work all this stuff out.
Right.
Let's get it.
And that's what our...
Let's get it worked out before we do the...
I just wondered, the financial impact for the county is minimal compared to these guys.
And my understanding is that no bills are going out until we get this, and all the focus at the sheriff's office is on implementation first, and then we'll deal with kind of the fees and things like that.
I also agree, again, with Commissioner Noack, that if we do this, I believe that money needs to go back to the sheriff's office. Each and one has to administrate this stuff, and then to build that general fund, it needs to go back in account somehow, somewhere.
And that will get a budget...
I would like to say, I was kind of outside looking in on this because this all took place before I took office, but putting trust in these guys and listening to the sheriff, I just want you guys to know from the sheriff's department, that by no means what we were doing was against what the sheriff's will or what, what took place, for me. I mean, we're, we're here for, for the sheriff's office, we're here for these guys and girls in the background, and that we're trying to make good decisions for this court, and it's very difficult because it's a hard decision to make, but we, we want y'all to know that it was nothing against the SOs at all.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Rehm-Rajah. We, as we, I'm, I'm, something, okay, as we move forward then, per agreement with our citizens, thank you. Is there any more questions for these guys? Because if not, I'm going to have the citizens wanting to make some comments, and then we're going to come back and decide on a vote per our previous discussion. Anything else? Thank you all. Appreciate that very much. At this time...
So right now, we moved the sheriff's presentation that was kind of under generally to take all appropriate action regarding non-consent tow in Montgomery County. That's the very first one. It's, it's all about non-consent tow in Montgomery County, in the current ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone, any of our citizens who would like to come forward and make a comment? Yes, if you'd identify yourself, please. Remember, you have three minutes.
How are you guys? My name's DJ Knox. I'm the UMC towing out of Eke. On the storage lot, allowing everybody else to open up another storage lot in that zone is crazy. There was only one or two companies that I know of, there might be more, that actually, prior to this year, we already had to have a storage lot in the zone we wanted to work at, so it's nothing new that we changed it back, we just made it the way it used to be. As far as I know, there's only one, maybe two companies that actually shut their others, that they were running two districts at that time, they shut their own, their other storage lot down because the sheriff said all we needed was one now. We should only allow them companies, and that company's not me, it's not for myself I'm saying this, we should only allow them companies to reopen them if they want to go back in those districts, because that's the only two or three companies that got hurt from this new rule. The rest of us, we didn't run those areas either. I'm not, I'm, we're going to run the east side, that's where my business is. I'm not running anywhere, so no matter how you roll, the only way that's going to hurt me is if you allow 50 more wreckers on our side of town. We hope that you would only allow the people that took their business out of there because of the new rule, allow them to, a chance to reopen their storage lot. And the other thing on the $25 fee, the fee is not a huge deal, as long as we could pass that fee to the customer, to the insurance company, and that's how the other counties do it. The way it's written here is, it's going to be the $25 out of our $250 tow fee. If we could charge that fee on top of the fee that we're already charging on a release fee, not a fee that, if we have a customer that has a wreck that's cutting a deal to take the car to his house, I shouldn't be penalized for that $25 fee. The county has nothing to do with it, the customer is requesting my service to take it to their house. If it's a prisoner ride, or if it's a stolen vehicle, or if it's something like that that goes to impound, then on top of our fee, if there needs to be a $25 law enforcement fee, call it that fee and add it to the top of the list instead of out of our cut, because there's lots of money coming out of our cut. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
What the sheriff office presented sounds awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Well, so scooting over with Texan Tow and Recovery, first of all, I'd like to thank every one of you guys, sheriff's department, commissioners, judges, for taking the time. I feel like we have gotten more accomplished in the last 45 days than we have in some 10 years, and so I have to commend y'all for that. Thank you very much. On the storage facilities, it's pretty simple. If you had a storage facility in the last 12 months, open it back up. I am that one company that had a storage facility in another district, and I closed it because the county said we would only need that one storage facility for the whole county, or whatever two districts you made in your zone. So we did close one down. I'm willing to open it back up. It's okay. I would like 30 days to do so for sure, but I also feel like maybe we ought to start thinking about a cap system, so that, I know Commissioner Noack's worried about other storage lots opening and other wrecker services coming in. After this year, let's cap this, so there's, if there's 58 companies on this rotation, at the end of this year, there's no more, there will never be no more than 58 companies. The only way you're going to get another company is if one falls out, or somebody buys somebody out, that's it. But thank y'all again for, for all the time that y'all, y'all put on this. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it so much. Yes. Evening.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, commissioners, judge. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. Again, I want to thank the court for all of your hard work on this. We know you're working very hard to satisfy our ministry. I want to thank you to all the captains for all your hard work. We know y'all have been working hard behind the scenes and taking the beating for it. I would like to say, we, I'm here on behalf of Millstone Automotive, Amy Millstone, and we are in support of this recommendation, this amendment. I think it satisfies a lot of areas. I think there's still work to do, let's make that clear, but we do support it. I would like to suggest, I know it's been suggested in the past, but it seems to have fallen on deaf ears, that the court appoint a committee, a committee to help with this. I think that it could be fair, I think it could be knowledgeable, I think we are the experts in the industry, and we should have a voice in this, so that they don't have to have all these extra meetings outside of the bar. I think the commissioners could each appoint two people from their district, so that we get a wide variety of opinion across the county. I think the sheriff's department should appoint someone, I think the county attorney should have someone there, I think DPS should have someone in this. I think they all have equal investment in this. It is our county, we all have to work together, and it spreads out the opinions and the concern across the county. My recommendation. Lastly, I want to say that that fee that's being discussed, the $25 fee, yes, we can pass it on to the consumer. That is a fee that law enforcement is obtaining, $7 of it, we understand, goes to the software folks. The difference goes to the sheriff's department. I agree, the sheriff's department needs that money to support this program, and we are all paying for that. TDLR allows that fee to be passed on to the consumer. Law enforcement fees on top of the fee are a separate fee, if you will, sorry, however you say that, but that fee should be in addition. It should not come off our money. We've been making the same amount of money for quite some time, and now you're on dockage $25, depending on who's reading the ordinance. I just feel we should be able to pass that one. Bear's bear. Any questions?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We're talking about different fees. And one is an admin, a twenty-five dollar admin fee that we're, I think we're, I think she's talking about the one that is being right now passed on to the consumer and then we send seven of it off to our software people. And a total cost of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for damaged accidents is being charged and right now, a part of that is that twenty-five dollars, is that correct? And it used to be, that you used to get a lower amount.
No, we get two-fifty and then that two-fifty is very unclear, is it part of that two-fifty or can we now charge two-seventy-five?
So, when we read it and what we're, what we're looking at right now is the ability to charge the twenty-five dollars on top of it, however, I'm not really sure that that's in compliance with the way the statute is drafted, because the way this statute is drafted, it says total, for a tow, you can get two-hundred-and-fifty, not two-hundred-and-fifty plus call it this kind of fee plus this kind of fee plus this kind of fee. And that's to protect consumers, that was the purpose of the statute and I think we have to stay under that.
Well, the legislature's in session, we can always ask, have it changed to where the twenty-five dollar fee is on top of the two-fifty, make everybody act.
Right.
Okay, yes ma'am, you should state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Rachel Harshaw, I own Harshaw Towing and Recovery. I'm a small business in Montgomery County, we've been here since 2016. Before this went into effect, we did not own a storage lot, we stored with another company who owned a storage facility. We went out, we opened a storage lot, which our storage lot location used to be a two- admin lot, which was part of the south district. With the new map, it is now a west district lot because it's on fourteen eighty-eight at lowest length. While they're saying that, you know, other companies that had a storage lot prior should be able to reopen that lot, I didn't have one prior, but I'm willing to open a second one to work in an area I've always worked. I've always worked in the south and I've always worked in the west, we live in west, we work in the south, but to take that ability away from us because we didn't own a storage lot prior would not be fair to business owners who didn't have a storage lot, we weren't in the storage lot business on a tow, a towing service. And then per TLR, as far as the twenty-five dollars go, what we were told, and I have an email from TLR, we are not allowed to take that, we're not supposed to take that out of what we charge and give to the county, it is supposed to stay our DSF signs that is administrative and it goes to the county. We charge that and then at the end of the month, we would pay it up to the county. Okay, that's it, please give.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Any other comments?
I hate getting up here again, but here it is.
No problem.
After reviewing everything, hearing everybody, everything is going great, Amy's right, TC's right, and DC, everything's going good, except for the last one here, okay? One is, I've been wrongly accused and incarcerated over false comments on fees seen because there wasn't no statute of the moral perpetuity, that needs to be looked into, okay? Second is, is that I have a copy of this right here to give to each one of you trying to reach out, emailing it to you, and why hasn't it been presented to you, I have no idea. We're all new at this, but why ain't somebody investigated it, okay, I don't know. If you're going to build something, why didn't someone look at Willis, okay, on a common ownership? It's right here, a statement affidavit, I'd like for y'all, can I hand it to you?
Sure.
All right. They did it right, and it was good for their city and our county, it's not from Harris County. And that's, basically, everything else is going, hold your field, thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, one second, okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Yes, sir.
Hi, Charles Miller with Miller Towing, I'm going to pick that for Dale left off on the Willis, because we store in Willis, we have a lot there, so that Willis, what he's referring to there, it, it goes beyond saying just in general, no common ownership, it goes on to, it actually starts out with saying that you cannot have any financial interest in another company. And what that means is that you can't have one big company or one big group of companies that comes in and takes over and tries to take out all the little guys. That's what that protects. That protects the small companies from being absorbed or being put out of business because somebody has a big pocket full of money and they want to open up a business, a bunch of different businesses or a bunch of different corporations in other names or in other people's names. That's what that prevents. So no financial interest in another towing service would be extremely important. While we're making a change, if that rule can say instead of no common ownership, no financial interest, and it's very clear in the wording on there for what Willis says on that, and it works fantastic in Willis. Thank you very much.
Mr. Miller, do you think this is a better plan than we have before today?
The zones?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Do you have any concern that we could end up in the same situation? We keep talking about six hundred rotations, but we don't really have, you might have six hundred in total, but we don't go from one to six hundred, you go from one to twenty or one to eighteen or one in each individual zone.
Right.
And we have the potential, as it is now, just to be right back at fifty-seven rotations in each of these four zones and it's going, y'all are not going to be happy with that.
Right, so that's, so that's why I think it's, it's been recommended that you only allow people that previously, companies that had a, a storage lot in, in another zone that shut that zone down, that's why it's been recommended, I believe, that only those, because otherwise you could possibly wind up right back with the same multitude of masses that we, that we have right now.
And that's, and, and, didn't we, I mean, Amy, first of all, can we limit that and second, Mr. Metz, I thought that your, your comment was that we needed to let anybody that wants to open a storage lot, open a storage lot.
It's, I was trying to be fair, but it's, it's either or.
So there's an equal protection issues that we have going on because those are a finite number and once you change the rules, they need to change for everyone across the board. You can either leave it like it is and wherever your lot is, until we open it back up next year at the enrollment period, do that, but you can't say, well, if you did it within the last twelve months, because we already know who those people are and who that affects, it's targeted, it's not fair across the board to everyone.
Thank you. There's plenty of companies.
Okay, then, then there should be something entertained, seriously entertained about limiting the number of companies per each zone, because otherwise then we wind up having the same list of, instead of being twelve or fifteen in a zone, we don't need that many companies in each zone.
And we discussed limited companies and, and the thought was that, you know, we wanted to open it up, that's a, that's a court decision, it's a policy decision, it's not a legal decision.
So if you don't allow... That part's up to you guys.
We have the authority to, to limit, Amy, we need, we have the authority to say if a tow truck driver buys a piece of property, or wherever he at, quote unquote, the limit, we have the authority to tell him that he can't put in a storage lot?
Okay, there's...
I mean, that's a...
We can have enrollment periods and we can do things for the benefit of public safety to, you know, to make sure that we have a, the way you get caps are, or, or things like that is for administrative purposes because the list is easier to manage, and that's why we license only one time a year because you're able to go out there and you're able to check the number of trucks and stuff. There has to be a rational basis for the rules that we're, that we're doing. So we, I think what you have to do is you have to decide, do you want to open it up and as we change the rules, allow everyone thirty days or fifteen days or whatever period so that they can obtain a lot in those other areas, or do you want to close it and say right now, wherever you are, you are, we're going to leave to these zones because we are trying to make this better?
If you close it, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry.
If you close it, if you close it, then you have an opportunity January twenty-two.
You could, you could do January twenty-two or you could work with the sheriff's office to do it some earlier point in time. It may be six months, that may be reasonable.
Well, I'd like just to finish with the last couple of questions, just two, two things, no, it's okay, just two things then. So, City of Conroe limits how many wreckers they have and, and it's, it's only ten, so it is possible to do that.
Ten in each zone?
No, City of Conroe, period, the city limits only allows ten companies.
How they, how they pick that?
And when we did that, they, I think there was a far outcry when we said we were going to cap the number of people because there is a big investment by our small businesses in obtaining trucks and equipment and things like that, so...
Right, that, that's not to say that it has to take, take ten for the next fifty years, that number is adjustable by the court, but that's to say to control just everybody coming in from across the county line and whatnot saying, oh, I just want to go jump in on that rotation.
How many licensed stores lots are in Montgomery County right now?
Fifty-eight, sir.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-seven, bear, what?
And just real quick, the last thing, and I'll sit down, is everybody needs to understand when we talk about joining this list and everything, that to do this job for the county, to work for the county, and we're basically a vendor for the county, that that is a privilege, it's not a right for any of us, that that's a privilege. So it's a privilege to be on that list and to do business in the county, none of us deserve it just because we're here and we own the truck.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? If you would state your names and record, please, we've got three minutes.
David Knox, at Settle Creek, thank y'all. I want to say real quick, Amy brought up the committee from everybody, I don't think it's all going to work out at one time today, that's where that committee will come in and we'll work on it till January and then get it back and go that way.
I like the idea.
Who would choose the committee?
Amy Millstead.
Let's go.
You would choose?
I guess, the way, the way...
I think that's a very good idea.
It's two from each commissioner, Metz would choose some, you would choose some, and then the sheriff's department would have somebody there and you meet a quarterly or whatever and, and go back to the county. Okay, and I, a lot of this discussion is going on today, which makes good points, could kind of be ready for from January twenty-two, as Mr. Metz did whenever it's time to.
We got to make a decision on what we're going to do today.
Yeah.
Right, and that's why I say that committee would, would be able to deal with that other stuff.
Thank you, we appreciate it so much. Any other comments here?
Bass Towing and Recovery, and I'm not angry today.
That's good, you look better that way.
Yeah, thank you. I was coming up here to ask y'all, the city of Houston, in the city of Houston, one through five, you have a plate, a heart plate on your truck, yours on one, two, three, four, five, you can't go to another zone to move a car. We need something like that to cap it on the zones and give just one zone. And also in that zone, are we going to be able to, the way it is, the west district, there's no possible way that you can make it from one side of that district to the other side of that district in twenty minutes, it's not possible now.
No, that was my concern.
Because right now, you're putting more on something, more on us than we chose in the first place.
Is it going to make people drive faster to get on the patient?
If you give me, if you give me a call from where you, you met me the first time from where I was sitting and you give me a call off the Walnut Creek, I'd probably have to drive about a hundred and twenty to get there. But you wouldn't yet. I would decline the call, but if that makes me lose my position on rotation in the whole zone because I couldn't make that call, we need to be able to work internally inside our zones together. I know that Richard Wobble, he never leaves fourteen eighty-six. He, that's where he's at, that's where he based his business, that's where he lives. He doesn't leave that area, he can't make it to my area in twenty minutes, just like I can't make it to his, and we're not going to try. So if we could have some kind of room in the zones, I mean, the zones are fine, I like them, but you can't even position yourself in a zone to make twenty minutes at all. If you're in Commissioner Riley's zone, there's nowhere in that zone that you can cover twenty minutes. The zones are larger than what we were ever picked. And also, can we have the sheriff's department do a study? Like capital is for now, have the sheriff's department or the commissioners do a study to see if there's a need for more companies in that zone? And then if there is, then open it back up and add more companies.
Well, growth would step in there.
Yes, sir.
If that area's growing, you're going to naturally be more trucks, more cars, all these are very good points.
Yes, sir.
And I'm probably not supposed to be talking, but still, this is, this is where, it's not here today, it's like Charlie said, we've got to make a decision on this first part, but all these things we do need to discuss because they're very critical for you guys as well as us up here on the court, so...
Those guys are very, very, very territorial, all their down, we don't, we don't go far from where we're at. I despise having to drive to Walnut Creek to get a car right now, I hate it, I hate it. When I'm up in that zone, I'm pissed off for like three days.
Thank you. That's a god country.
Real quick, Commissioner, make sure, if we were to implement this plan and we do not allow additional storage facilities and we can cap it at twelve, fifteen, 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 just like it is here, that should make the rotation system work a heck of a lot better and these folks, you don't have to zoom all the way across west county to, because you know you're going to get another tow pretty quickly. And the other thing, I think he's right, I don't know if there's any way for, you know, them to kind of partner up and be able to say, look, I can't get there, but Joe, I, I don't know, I mean, just to, I guess the next, the next, or, I think you said Tim...
That's something that the committee can work on.
That you're going to have, y'all are going to strictly follow the, the order of these cars, so you can't just line up and hope that somebody doesn't show up and get you, stop that practice and utilize the number, you know, who's ever next and then next and then next. I think, then I think I can be supportive as well.
Proceed. Give us your, give us your name for the...
I'm Dennis Blake, I own TND Towing. When all this rotation took place, I actually shut my company down and leased my truck on with Jason Adamix because I knew that the original wasn't going to work in my eyes, wasn't going to work for me, wasn't, just wasn't going to work. Now that it's changed and it's actually getting to where you can actually do this rotation and it makes sense, well, my company's not on there anymore. If we're going to open it up to where we get a storage lot, are we going to open it up to where I can put my company back up and running under my own name? Because I closed it down because of this rotation, I knew I wouldn't be able to do it by myself, knew it wasn't going to work, but now that y'all made changes and the sheriff's department's actually listening...
Yeah, that's what Metz and I were just discussing, was asking the sheriff's department about how we work when we reopen, would you say, in, in January or how do we do it?
Well, I was going to ask Captain Holdfield, I was talking about this up here, Captain, I, I think we've discussed this in the past, if, if you're going to have a, a review, are you guys, let me put it that way, a question, do you guys kind of have to review your policies to, to reviews in my storage lots of companies in, in, in January of, of twenty-two? Is that the plan or is that, or am I way off track here?
No, sir, so Commissioner, as the sheriff presented, when this ordinance was originally presented, we realized that we may need to make some adjustments to it and come back to this court, and we were prepared for that, and so we're constantly reviewing not only our policies but our procedures to make sure that it's as fair and equitable and responsive as we can make it. And so we would make those recommendations. When it comes to ordinance making power though, that is upon the court.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But, but, but if we, if we do what Commissioner Noah is wanting to do as well, if you leave it like it is right now, they'll have an opportunity, you, you guys are going to look, as Richard Walker said, to see where the growth is, what's happening there and to see what the needs are, more than likely in January, can we add additional lots or companies?
We can amend the ordinance at the will of the court.
Well, I thought that was already in there that you guys were going to...
And so every year, every year, they do an enrollment period, and so people can come up every year to enroll. That said, if you are wanting to, right now, close it to, or, or set it the way the map is, everybody who is towing right now are within those twenty-four zones, are in those four zones now and they're wherever their lot is. If you want to revisit that over the next year or in January next year, we can do that, we can work with the sheriff's office to do that.
Are y'all opposed to that, you think the sheriff would be opposed to that? If, if we, if we close it off like it is right now, like, y'all opposed to reviewing that sometime at some point now or the first one next year?
No, sir, we're not.
Reviewing what though? What are you talking about reviewing?
Reviewing, letting him come in next year.
We're talking about, we're talking about...
If you close it off right now, just like it is, like it is here now, I, I was wondering if, if you close this off right now and meet a lot of these concerns, are we going to allow...
are we going to allow in the future, whether it's nine months or the first of the year, it seems to be, I thought that was.
I think every year, every year we have an enrollment.
I've totally spoken when I've said, close it. It's not closing it, it's not reopening it. It's the people that are currently involved in the rotation schedule now. Allowing them to continue to be involved in the rotation schedule. So saying closed is not accurate. What it is, is are we going to reopen it?
And correct.
And we're not. No, it's, it's my, my, my verdict, I just wanna correct that. The people that are here and already involved in this business are going to stay involved in this business in the zones that they are currently, that are tied to the four that they have.
And they do not have the ability to open another four lot, another.
At this point, what, at this point, what I think the sheriff is asking for is, is time to get these four zones up and running. And then we will look at additional modifications in the future. But given what we have, let's change the zones, make the four, see how that works, and revisit additional changes if necessary.
And Captain Hovefield, you said it would be March 1st, right?
Yes, sir, we're asking for a timeline to give us until March 1st, hoping that we can get it done sooner than that. But just understanding that we're dealing with some inclement weather, and we have an issue right now with the map, and we do not want to break our cat system.
We're gonna need all of you.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? Already spoken? Already spoken once. Is there anybody else who has not spoken? Yes.
I just want to get on a minute. Jason Yal, ATK LLC. I just want to state this. If we go to not allowing us to get another storage facility, that wasn't part of my business plan at the beginning. If it would have been, I would have went out in the east and purchased in the east as well. So that will limit me, and putting caps on that will be detrimental to my business.
Thank you. Hovfield?
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
I'm pretty simple, okay? I don't own a record business for anything, you know? You know, these guys have do a great job, well, I've been here 30 years in law courts in this county. I've seen them over the years get better and better in how they do their jobs. They've helped us catch people, there were eyes and ears on the streets if something happened. These guys are set up and they see the people that are robbing. They've done a great job. Something bothered me the other day when I was in here, and wouldn't elaborate on, but one of the guys came up here and talked and said, they've already figured out how to cheat the system or beat the system. What I'd like for these companies, you know, they're trying to do it legally and right, to reach out to the Sheriff's Department, if they know this is going on, so we can stop that from happening, circumvent the rules. We have three captains here, you know, no one followed up on that the other day, but it did bother me, because we're putting these rules for everybody to be equal.
Kevin Longkin?
Just to address, Cuswell Cash's comment, we did follow up on that, we did address it. And we dealt with it through our vendor who had somebody on recording giving them misinformation, and that person's no longer dealing with this issue whatsoever. So it was swiftly addressed, and we did deal with it. To his point about tow companies trying to take a call and not respond at all to sabotage the system, absolutely, gentlemen. We know that's going on, they know that's going on. You know, we're gonna address it, we're going to strictly enforce the ordinance rules, and I think that will fix it. To the comment about the 20 minutes is not enough time, I would just remind you that this four-zone map was much longer than we had in December, and then we had 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to.
Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Because we have some really great companies in our, in our communities, and they're trying to do the right thing. I just want everybody to be equal, and I know they are. Hopefully, we can get that finalized with this next, next four of these persons.
Hovfield, thank you so much. All right. We're pretty much exhausted, I think we're, yes, time for another comment. Identify yourself, please.
Glenn Bryant, New Canyon Bump Services. You know, last year when we was in this, I basically went out of a business to get into this business. I will say, when I did get into this business, I chose six zones, 1 through 6. Out of them, I've got, I've received, I think, 23 dispatch responses, you know, for me to respond to it. And I accepted 22. I didn't overload myself. We picked what we could handle. It was a little nail-biter here and there between 3 and 6, which ones would come up first. But we didn't, we didn't have no issues. The only one we did miss was a, basically, dispatcher, where we got there, we got dispatcher over there, set up, and say, no, somebody was up for a rotation error, and it was like for 20 hours. It was, it's clear, it was a new, it's a new program. I got no issues. I mean, I really appreciate you guys, you've done a good job on getting it out there. We got a big piece of the pie out of it, but, you know, for a pretty small company. We're happy with what we, what we achieved. Only thing that really affected me, like I said, was in the storage lot business previously. I was supposed to be into a new business. Well, in the day, they did a great job.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I mean, it's a lot on y'all's part as well.
Thank you, appreciate you coming up and making comments. BD? Are we ready to, Commissioner, do you want to make a motion? Oh, oh, we have another comment, sorry. Could you state your name for the record, please?
James Melk, Melk's Towing. Well, I've been up here three, four years now, and when I got up here, you could run the whole county, so, of course, I bought the whole county. And now, when they changed, they made us go to rotation, I opened up a lot in Lois, but I was gonna eventually open a lot on the east side, because that's where I live. And right now, I have a lot that I'm opening, and I'm only like, maybe three or four days, it'll be open. And then if you go back and change it now, and then, because my lot's here and I live here, so I'm having to take my cars back to Lois Lane. It is pretty far, so that's why I need to put this lot up and leave, so I can leave the cars on the east side. But if you change it, then that's just gonna, because I didn't pick any zones over here, so now I'm gonna have to pick zones and start all back over and blah, blah, blah. I'm just wondering, you know.
Just, thank you. We appreciate it so much. Concerning that, there's a number three on there, give me 30 days.
That's what we're discussing, is, does the court want to allow 30 days to, for people to open up lots? And I think, Commissioner Noah's concern was, if you do that, that we are going to end up with the same problem we have right now, which is a lot more than the 15 or 14 in each zone, which you'll end up with, was at 57 in each zone.
Would you give them six?
Okay, any other comments?
Did you have any comments, Captain?
I'm sorry.
State your answer for the record, three minutes.
I'm Richard Wobble with S and T, I'm a minority. The S is sitting around here, 12 years old, he's been watching the battle. We are good with captaincy. Come back in 2022, revisit, whatever. You know, the committee's a good thing. It'll make everything move forward easier. I understand that there's people that's going, you can't make everybody happy, I understand that. But what y'all are doing is the right stuff. Cap it, let's move forward.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Captain Hovefield?
Judge Commission? If the approach that we've laid out to you today is pleasing to the court, I'll be happy to lay out some items that would help us facilitate the changes that you've asked. And if you would like to make those a motion after I lay them out, that would be your choice. First, we're asking that you adopt the revised tow and storage map that's presented, for all purposes connected with the towing rotation system.
Can we move on now? Can we do these separately here?
Do we need to do these separately?
Yes.
You can do these separately if you'd so choose.
Okay, then, do we have a motion on that?
Hold on, I'll move second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Number two, Judge, would be by requiring the tow companies to have a permitted VSF for vehicle storage facility within each tow zone that they have applied for or desire to be permitted in. So in order for them to tow in a zone, they must first have a storage lot there, and they must store the vehicles in that zone.
And don't they already have that there?
No, sir, it's anywhere in the county. That's, that was brought up with some of the commissioners concerned, but.
But there.
One of these four?
Four. And those numbers that I gave you represent the number of storage lots that are listed in each of those four zones.
But this would, would this not open up the issue that I have, where they'd be able to have a storage lot? I mean, you could end up with 57 people in one of those four.
Right, what he's wanting to do is to go ahead and, and require saying that the map as it sits would be the current tow zones associated with these storage, four, four storage zones. So if you want to tow in one of these four, you have to be in that zone in which you are towing. You have to have a storage lot in the zone in which you are towing. And you have to have it currently, is what we're, is what we're saying right now.
Twelve people in one zone, we've got 15 in the rest.
Right, he's wanting, he's wanting to not reopen it.
Or is she, we make a motion?
Yes, I'm moving that.
You have a second?
I'll have a second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. And the final thing that would help is, the court has kind of taken this issue back over. And we're asking that if you're wanting the sheriff to administer it, we're asking you to give it back to him and let him take a step. You have to understand that while we may have 70, 80, 90% of the tow operators and owners who are supportive of this, there's gonna be still a fraction, and I think you've heard of some today, that are not pleased with the outcome of this, this map and how it may impact them still. So you may still have to come in before the court. And I'll be very quick, if you will allow me. If the court will consider by authorizing the Sheriff's Office to make any and all policy changes to effectuate the same and effective immediately disallows the sheriff that if we get this done sooner than March 1st, he can make it effective then. But allow them that authority.
All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries.
They're not gonna be able to hear you go to that buzzer, just hold off on the vote for a second.
Mr. Temporary recess, question back. Opposed, motion carries, thank y'all very much, have a great week.